cuz I knew we were talking about uh working on this how is the audio doing I added new music to the stream and I'm playing in the background so hopefully it's uh not too buggy I'm gonna wait like I always do in my live streams um I'm going to wait until maybe a few more people come through cuz I usually do them randomly as always uh but once more people come through at least like four or five uh users I will start a live streaming or going on what we're doing but uh for today's video we're gonna be taking a look at the stars or uh Cantina basically alright we got five people already welcome all uh for those who are watching thank you for leaving likes already um let me actually do this to uh really quickly I'll actually tweet it out that I'm live streaming I should have did this before but uh whatever let me just open up YouTube really quickly hey alright we got eight people in here cool um let me just retweet that I am like uh actually uh streaming right now and then I'll whatchamacallit I'll get started on actually working so let me just share this out as a tweet hopefully everyone is doing okay today this is kinda like the backend so I'm like seeing myself type right now alright I'm not too sure what else I'm gonna be doing uh for today's livestream um let me see something really quick alright that's pretty good alright that should be alright hey what's up uh when will be able to play on the PC via 4 online um good morning in terms of that well we basically online will always uh probably come out for the PS3 first cuz online the way how home works is so integrated with PSN we would basically have to patch everything out uh and that means like we basically have to patch clubs out PSN ID uh PSN authentication and emulate it but that's the question hopefully um you know I really wish we could get a RPCS3 client running but here is uh the posters we're gonna add my friend Kyle um he's oh he he does a great job helping me with this um we're gonna be adding the original posters um I'm doing this kinda live right now I I did sorta prep like I have all of my uh pictures that is supposed to I guess go here but we're gonna try to get this added to here uh but first things first I need to check where the file location is located so let me go ahead and uh alright so the LucasArts Star Wars Cantina so we got environments layer out alright so I see where this gotta go so layer out yeah if you guys wanna ask me any questions feel free to um and then I can add or answer them once I like toggle back out but first I'm just trying to uh find a screen content main screen links yeah even the screen links is literally saying Yoda 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 so this is pretty uh easy we could get like uh hey Nucleus Abyss welcome so we need one video and I'll kinda show you hold on hey why are you at this space um we're gonna fix uh the screen links and just videos sadly um I don't even know what video was playing here Kyle if you're still watching a stream do you know what actual video that was here cuz we could do a custom one but uh I rather would have like an original um like video I don't we could probably get like a 640p video but I'm not too sure we could try let me see I could try to check this and uh let me say Lucas Arts maybe Star Wars nah I did not like that yeah hmm yeah this tree list is not giving me anything yeah there was actually music playing in the space and I'm thinking it came from uh we can see actually where the music came from it probably came from a mini game but I can verify that or like it wasn't a mini game per se let me scratch that out it was from the um whatchamacallit wait there was fucking music the hell layer out yeah the music is here I don't know why it's not playing um sound stream is it like a lower script protected false layer out this is weird I don't know why the music is not playing MDLs I'm just looking at the list yeah all of the music is basically here I don't know if it's uh let's see let me see audio maybe I may have to take a look at the music later on I'm just trying to see particle effects undecipher this really quick yeah the MP3s are in the correct location I don't know why it's uh if I recall it was the Force Unleashed 2 teaser or the Complete Saga video uh do you have that video Kyle if not that's fine I could place a dummy video for now and then uh we could just go back and uh rework um the actual thing but looking at the screen links there's also a BNK in here but what we could do since there's one two how many damn screens so one two wait there's two right here three four five six seven eight I think this is literally eight alright so yeah that actually matches up you did a great job um did you see the Japanese version of home uh yeah I actually used to play Japan home all the time I used to stay on those servers a lot I'm from NA home though I'm from the US but uh I used to play all regions of hope but Japan home uh I always liked their spaces better but alright let's get started I wanna do a one-to-one version of this um so I'm gonna use YouTube as a reference let's see Star Wars Cantina just gonna use this video let me lower down the resolution so it won't mess with my last room I'll put it to 480p cuz it really doesn't matter I just wanna alright so it does show alright so we got this dude right here and that guy so we could kinda use these pictures for reference and rework from here so the dude would like the Afro uh we're gonna we're gonna go ahead and switch that so screen links um and let me actually do this now prep so I could have a folder so PlayStation home um 1.24v and then uh 1.86 patch and this is where we're gonna place the patch so once I release this on GitHub for you guys uh everything will be in this directory right here and then uh we could just pack it in and then um we could write our patch notes in this notepad but I will have that little later but um there's two videos um whatever I don't I don't really care about the videos but what we're gonna do now is go ahead and I'm gonna place all eight of these uh I'm not even trying to load this up but I'm gonna um I'm gonna place these screen links into the correct directory that's what I'm trying to say and I got a whole bunch of uh files loading or files up right now so let me go to user directory really quick there's always just so many folders I have to mess with and I'll real read back in the chat really quickly as well I'm just the task of multitasking is whatchamacallit kinda little brazy alright so let's see alright yeah so everything just loads from there um where the hell was uh the guy though alright we can just use this DDS as a base one and we could actually uh set the half of the screen content right here and I'm changing the source okay so that's done and we're just gonna fix that but let me go back to the livestream to see which guys are talking about hey what's up what's up what's up uh do we have the Japanese version of PlayStation home we have a couple of Japanese spaces um and what I'll do is uh once I get a good amount of stuff done in the livestream um I will actually whatchamacallit I'll show some Japanese spaces but in the meantime um you can see some Japanese spaces here uh this is Music Cafe from Japan one of my favorite spaces uh Japanese Winter Home Square from 2010 Irons Market the Christmas edition that was from Japan home exclusively uh trying to see Namkoro Kaito was also from Japan home as well um this is from uh this is the Home Square for Japan this is like the later version and this is like Granzilla Hankaki Guy Lounge I think that's how it's pronounced and hey Jinx welcome and hey Arthur Stolas thank you for joining in but um so the first image is not even this one so we're just gonna walk really quickly alright so that's that picture I'm just trying to get a one-to-one so I gotta play with like the pictures here what I'm gonna do actually to make this a little bit easier is make the icons like this bro where the hell here let me just delete some of these photos these are just some other pictures okay so so alright so that was that photo that one was number two so I'm assuming this was this one this actually may go faster than I uh I'm thinking well we still gotta download MP4 so shouldn't it take too long alright and then trying to compare with this one okay then it's like this guy right here I'm not even a big Star Wars fan but for all you Star Wars fans out there um hopefully y'all guys do enjoy this never really got into Star Wars I should just watch one uh episode but I know there's some diehard like Star Wars fans I know like people who are very cult uh they love hanging in the space hey Blitz welcome hey Jacob McFall welcome to the livestream alright so alright this is coming well now so we got these three oh it was I never see that's crazy like there's a lot of games I haven't played uh I haven't played like Assassin's Creed there's like a lot of series I should get myself into alright we got Darth Vader and I see this dude's eyebrow I really can't tell cuz the angle that uh this person took their picture at but at least we know Darth Vader is here so we got Darth Vader right here um and then this dude with the bushy ass eyebrows I don't even know his name but uh that's him alright so that's five I'm assuming if that's five six it's gotta be seven and eight and uh it's actually maybe way faster oh snap I deleted one of the sources F wait I don't know what the hell I did I'm kinda confused wait if that's one two three and four one three was Vader okay okay so that's that and then six should be him and I'll stop right there and then I'll reload the space cuz at least that is done alright let me um make sure alright that looks okay to me nice background music it really sets the mood oh thank you uh these are like the this is the same music I use for like my regular YouTube videos and I was like why not if that's a Japanese cardigan yes I really want the red Japanese one like hold on I used to have the Japanese version of this I meant red um he let me see I'm trying to find the actual website hold on I'll show you like the official uh threads website that showcased the Japanese cardigan in a second but um looking at this really quickly while that loads up let me back up a little bit alright so it's this dude right here if there's something like on this wall okay um it's this guy so there's gotta be Yoda at the end then Yoda 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 alright so and let me just skip to her here I'll even leave a like cuz this is actually helping me yeah Yoda's Shrek looking at that's over here uh alright that's actually should be straight so let me run over to Lucas Arts um and let me um I'll show my desktop a little bit so you could understand if you're still here Jinx um trying to see there's like there's a few Japanese items that I'm wanting from Japan home still here I'll actually open this in a new tab and uh I'll open this in a new tab and um there's like a couple of cardigans that Japan home specifically had and okay we're looking good now so this came out in 2010 these items if I had if I knew how to like re-edit textures and stuff I will probably like make a custom cardigan and like the exact color like this was like a green version of it or like a dark green which I really liked and uh here's the red one for the website this uh actually came from yeah like these cardigans we have one of the female ones we have like the pink version that I restored myself and I like these like little Nordic sweaters I thought they were pretty dope I used to have them but sadly it's probably in John Drinkwater's cache data oh thank you I could dig for it later see if we have it somewhere uh yeah I wish we did textures yeah if I know I have actually a plugin in Photoshop that I uh utilize to open up textures but I'm really not too sure how to operate it probably later on I will like look it up but uh oh y'all guys can't even see the screen here but um here's here's Star Wars now it looks good Kyle thank you we got like a one-to-one match now except like the video um but for the video we could do something cool with it so that will get a video soon um but one thing I do wanna show um for guys that missed the last livestream somebody asked me um are really cool um if you want to uh DM me later um on my Discord and I can like if you could help me with that that would be awesome man but yeah you know what's so cool there's like a hidden space so like somebody asked me what was behind this curtain I was like what the hell I don't know and um it pops up and it says Cantina tests VIP screen and I guess it was supposed to be new but if you like disable collisions you could see here it's like the exact same version or it's like like this version right here um I don't know it's basically Cantina space too so I don't know like it was unfinished but I'm not too sure like if I um let me see something really quick like I'm gonna go ahead and walk through it real second or real quick let me see but yeah I know like a lot of spaces toward the end of home some of the screen links were down because I guess like the videos weren't hosted on the servers and depending on like certain like certain spaces would have like the video embedded inside the space itself which is probably how I'm gonna be doing stuff when online comes on uh for certain spaces but uh like certain spaces just request stuff from a server and some stuff is live but yeah by just using this command really quickly um this is basically the other side that I guess you couldn't access um I think I don't know if they were trying to allow you to walk outside and stuff but uh I don't know this is pretty cool but I guess this is video two cuz I was looking at the screen links do you know what person's uh uh data was it or name was it like cuz I may have it on my PC cuz I don't know but um I guess we could either I could just put a temporary video up for now just to see if the of course the video screen is working so uh I don't even know what type of video we should put Star Wars Cantina bruh they got a 10 hour loop of the band I think this is the like the little like aliens that used to play bro let me hear my eyes like yeah this is the music that's kinda crazy nah the song used to be dope though I used to listen to it let me hear I mean I guess I could put that as a placeholder until my boy Kyle finds it just so we could make sure it's working um okay so let me use my sketchy website that I always use for this process even though it probably is gonna give me a virus but uh this website actually is what I've been restoring uh hell no I do I got ad blocker I do alright so this video is at 360 by 360 this should definitely play download alright so um working with music is actually way better uh cuz I don't know I feel like it's sometimes boring without the music but I think music helps these streams make it more alive and I ain't even gonna lie even myself I'd be kinda tired too of like uh um okay hell no I wanna reload the disk what is this isn't home dead already BZB trailer found nice what is exactly this uh this is PlayStation home but I'm using a debug client and I'm well I'm doing two things I'm also restoring like the offline client so people could test now as well I'm working with a team to restore its online uh functionality so we got that done let me see if mine alright so the audio does work I don't wanna get copyright claimed so I walked back but the audio does work for that space and the video uh actually pops up it's the cache from July 20th uh I may have that on my PC still I'm not too sure I could take a look at it later though but yeah I think we're pretty much good with Star Wars right now um I don't even know let me actually uh disabled character collection or collisions or actually somebody wanted to see some Japanese home spaces if you're still in here we could take a quick look at that and actually what we can do um we could go to one of my favorite I like going to Home Square a lot you y'all guys are giving me a reason to go to my favorite space so um but what we're gonna do is try to fix Granzilla Sunset but let me compile uh some of this stuff for you guys now so let me get this set up let me let me get the patch notes like ready I'm gonna have to compile this uh get the patch notes so in the meantime while I walk around Japan Home Square I will actually get all the updates or at least get the latest patch notes for the update user directory alright so let me just drag this here bop okay yeah but Japan Home Square I don't know is it just me or certain spaces looks better than others or what is so slow the loading speed um the reason why for certain spaces uh it has to like load up a lot of data so like it will take some time hey clockwork but like it has to like load up posters and stuff which takes some time yeah this was like out of I do like Central Plaza don't get me wrong but I don't know I really like Japan Home Square like just look how the tech is it just me or always the textures to like Japan spaces was better like look at the glass the glass always looked really nice um I really want the theater for this oh why is there a PS5 video uh playing or I put that there since I wanted to like uh added uh you know just some newer stuff in the client just so it you know resembles PlayStation and I thought why not the PS5 is something uh cool but I still added like original posters like these were like original Torah parts excuse me posters that reminds me um there's so many Japanese spaces we still need like uh Iron Square we need all of the Capcom Um, there's so many Japanese spaces. We still need like uh Iron Square. We need all of the Capcom Theater and like the movie centers. We did get Capcom Sky Lounge from Japan. Uh, we also got some other stuff. Um, Iron Square, I know people really want to and sadly, we haven't got that. I'd never been to Iron Square. So for me uh I would really want that so I could just see like what it is, but it'll probably come from old data. Um, I added this original stuff, uh Black Rock Shooter, one of my favorite animes. This is just my logo. I don't know. I like just adding that. Um, this is just some regular screen link stuff. Um, we're missing Japanese bowling alley. So there's some key stuff. Yeah, Iron Square. I'm so lucky. We got Pika Vox Monsters and we got some other stuff too. But um, let's go to another Japanese space since uh we're gonna be working in here and it may take me quite a while. Uh, let me see. Showy Kingdom, I'm happy that we had. I'm really glad we did get Iron Market. Um, there's some other things like we, there's this rare um Iron space. The INF files. Uh, yeah, I've checked the INF files a lot of times before. The INF files are either sometimes encrypted or decrypted. Like in older builds, they're usually not and they usually lead back to like what the file was or like where it was located in the servers. Okay, so let me go ahead and change this patch notes. I kinda use the same template cuz A, I'm kinda lazy and B, um if it ain't broke, then don't fix it. So blah, blah, blah. There you go. Um. And I usually double check all like anytime I have new data, I double check it just to make sure um we're not missing any spaces. Um, but yeah, we gotta go ahead. I don't know how many posters this space has, but uh I may have to find some Granzilla themed posters. Um, but this used to be like just based off Granzilla stuff. Um, but this is the Japanese version of this space. So what I can do is, I don't know if this is actual uh screen right here or that was for the mini game, but uh we could just add some posters here centralized like Granzilla stuff. I mean, it's just kinda cool like how you could see the models of some of the clothing they use, like uh these used to be like the soccer shirts. I remember uh people rocking them and they used to have like, yeah, the number 10 on the back of them. This is the delinquent uh shirt from females. She reminds me of the Persona 4 girl. I don't, I forgot her name, but she wore like a similar outfit to that. But we can uh get this utilized and fixed. Item shop. So we could do something kinda cool with this. Um, I think we have enough data to go off of. Yeah, some of them are obfuscated. Oh yeah, hopefully. But let me write this down uh. Alright. And then I'll add tutorial Kyle because you did do the work uh in terms of finding it. I just placed it. Um, so we got Star Wars Cantina done. I need to actually get some more LMOs uh and my boy, what you call it, do it for me. I just been busy with other stuff. Um. I gotta get the official Japanese name to this space. Um, I know I had it in my screen links, so it's Granzilla Sunset. Uh, we will be taking a look at that. And we will place that here. Let's see. And patch notes. Pictures. Alright, so we can have that here and uh we could get this fixed. So first things first, what I like to do is um we can actually do some like key digging or whatever. Alright, thank you Jinx uh for tuning in. I really appreciate it. You have a great day. Um, but what I'm gonna do is let's see, we could work with the Wayback Time Machine. And we could find some like Granzilla stuff uh centered around GZ. I don't know if the, let me see. If we just do a really quick search on uh PlayStation Home. Let's see if we could get some uh nice posters. We can actually, I'm gonna create an archive on my desktop and uh we're just gonna go ahead and I'm just gonna add like photos we could possibly add to these spaces. Um. This is actually a nice photo. I like. Glittering sands. Is there like a way I could like set my dimensions? Forum Iron developer working on PlayStation and 3M Vita. Ah, oh, that was like, oh, that was like YSS three days ago. Don't really see any like key stuff I can use, but uh let me see, we could just say posters maybe. Alright, maybe this is good Granzilla. We could maybe check their uh Facebook. I'm not too sure though. Um, here. I have to sign in or hell no. I don't use Facebook, so not doing that. Um. We could just look in cache data though. Can you show PSP and PlayStation Home and all menus please? Uh, yeah, actually we could. I'll, I'll switch my client really quickly. Uh. I don't think I have GDC on, but we could go to, let me disconnect for real quick. And I can, I could show you guys uh PSP if you really wanna see that. I don't mind. Let me see. Hopefully it will reconnect. This one wanted to connect just fine. Well, it's taking a little while. Let me see. Getting call and you. I think Prodigy is starting to act stupid now. Um, let me just try to exit out of Prodigy and uh I'll boot it back up on the screen. Uh timed out. Okay. Alright, so I think my PS3 is taking a crap. I'll turn it off and turn it back on and hopefully uh it will work. So if you see a black screen, that's normal, but uh what I'll do is in the meantime, we'll try to get some Granzilla themed um like cover art and photo stuff. So my PS3 is back on right now. Alright, yeah. So that did the trick. So I'm launching the PSP for you really quickly right now and um I'm just waiting for that to do its thing. So just waiting to see the output. But what I'm gonna do is uh try to look through some cache data. Um. I'm gonna use my friend's Toyo Kyles cuz I know he used to probably hang out in Granzilla and just mess around with cache data or not, not mess around with cache data. I mean, he does that too, but I wanna find uh not globals per se. I'm just trying to find stuff centralized around Granzilla stuff. So uh we can um look at that, but in the meantime, I'm gonna do this request. And I'm going to launch into uh 97 really quickly. And yeah, y'all guys should be seeing 97. Welcome back, Juggalo. So Home is booting up now. But uh here is the menus for the PSP. Um, you have the wardrobe menu. This is the 89 client. This is not GDC build. Um. I can't set up GDC as of right now. I mean, I can, but I really don't wanna uh rearrange all my plugs cuz to set up GDC, I use my development like kit, like my big PS3 and um the way how I have this PlayStation 3 set up, um it's set up a certain ways. So um that basically I would have to like reformat my hard drive and get everything set up, which will take too much time cuz it's kinda finicky on how to set up uh GDC per se. But uh here's the wardrobe, uh redecorate the home space. You can see here, I could just add furniture, picture frames, uh just appliances and stuff like that. So we got that. Uh, my inventory. Got the bubble machine. This is like one of the first LMOs about um a bubble machine that emits bubbles when activated. This is like one of the very first uh little things that Home actually implemented. Like this is a very early item. My purchases. So of course, this was just go via with um just like all the purchases that a user would buy. My profile, um this is only like if you were online and you went to go ahead and sign in. Uh, this function won't necessarily work right now because you need to go online, but you know, hopefully in that uh this will change in the future. Um. Oh, we got some Granzilla stuff. If you wanna do me a favor Kyle, if you wanna send me a bunch of Granzilla um images, if you're still here and if you're free, you can. Uh, but what I'm doing is just looking through your data, trying to see anything Granzilla related. Okay, we got. Alright, we got some Granzilla. So you did have some uh Granzilla stuff. I can also check the Japan homes uh. Sorry, I'm like multitasking, but back to the thing uh theme. Uh, you could change your PSP theme. So just a background uh X and B of it, which is pretty cool. Um, last live stream, I was just comparing on how like similar they try to make the theme to it. Uh, color, not too sure. I think this is just the color of the PSP itself. Um, in GDC client, you could change the other one. Pop-up color. It's just a pop-up color of your character. So if I wanted to be purple, I can. Uh, it's just that. Microphone, um if I had a microphone setting with like Bluetooth, I could uh change the master volume to that speech. Ambient sound. So basically anything ambient, it's like the the seagulls playing in the background. Uh, that's that. Also, you guys kinda reminded me to um, what you call it? Forgot or for my Vita people out there, I will have a PlayStation Vita uh Vita video out soon today. Uh, hopefully I already got it uploaded. Um, basically I just have to uh wait till it renders to 4K resolution. And then um for all you guys who like my Vita content, there will be something for the Vita. Ooh, this is a nice Granzilla one. This is a Granzilla Hankaki guy uh labs. Some videos? Nice. Uh, keep those to the side and worry it up. You could just call it like the Granzilla archive. Um, cuz we could work from like that folder and I'm looking at your second data that you uh donated to us, my friend. And uh you got some cool stuff in here. Yeah, the INFs are obfuscated for sure shit. Bro, these are the Dance Dance Revolution space stuff. Smart, smart ass game. Smart as uh join today places in the plus. Oh, we got your Hudson Gate stuff. Neat is novice promise see from you. Uh, this is like one of the Granzilla spaces that people really like. I remember. PlayStation 4 keeps seeing like little mockups of it. It's kinda pretty cool to see like these uh official development mockups of the PS4 being introduced in the home. You got some of the Iron stuff that used to be in Iron Market from Pachi Pata. Always like how the um anime look of this looks like. Um. But that's that. I think we're gonna go to another person's data really quickly cuz I, I know he played Japan Home and uh we can take a look at that. I'm just trying to compile or not world map, but uh but oh yeah, sorry guys. I know somebody was wanted to look, but here's the controls, communication uh about PlayStation Home. Uh, this just talks about like the legal information and usage. Um, of course. Yeah, this website won't load cuz uh it's dead now. Uh, communication controls. It's just talking about inverted out. World map is just the world map, which wouldn't look. Marvel? Nice. Uh, favorites is just for spaces. Own spaces is Harvest Studio, uh create game, launch game, view player list, uh cancel game. First time in PlayStation Home. Character customization, communication, uh moving to a new location. Your own home space, game launching, playing your home games, uh safety in home. Game launching is like uh launching gaming sessions, but you need to be online for that. Uh, news. Show the create game menu. Yeah, I don't, yeah, for that, that deals with online. I can't do anything. News, uh latest update, handy links, uh message of the day, online. No messages that will be, I guess, for PSN and friends list will be dead cuz uh of that. Like a lot of this stuff is connected to the online client. Uh, sadly. And yeah, it's just the same uh CMD type do. And the games logo menu? Oh, this, this would just show you basically what all the games, but it still won't uh launch, but it just shows you what games I have on my console, which is uh currently Call of Duty, Fat Princess, uh React PSN, GTA Academy 2013. GTA Academy twenty thirteen, uh, Crazy Taxi, Playstation Home, CC API, Namco Essentials, Rebug Toolbox, Webman, uh, RetroArch, Persona 5. And yeah, so like, let's say if I try to launch Call of Duty, um, it won't do anything because uh, the resources will fall, fail, and it will just automatically try to keep on loading, um, because it's trying to request the server to actually do the game launch, but um, yeah, sadly, it won't work cuz we have to restore that for the online functionality. Cuz game launching, uh, what, what it does is try to, or what it does is sends like a communication message to all users in a server, so it's like, hey, uh, Naguto is playing, uh, I don't know, Grand Three Smo five, even though that server is down, but um, he's playing Grand Three Smo five, do you wanna join him in such and such game, and it will kind of uh, create those handles uh, for that. But uh, on another note, we're going to try to find me some Granzilla stuff real quick, some more. This came from Pixel Junk Space. Hudson. Ooh, this is from Music Cafe. Ooh, we got some Granzilla stuff. Y'all guys remember uh, the Kaikigi Empire Lounge or whatever? I really want that space, like there was like a bunch of minis game, it was like a full-on mini game. I know I'm kinda getting off topic, but uh, I just wanna see if Kyle, you, maybe you remember this, um, let's see. I forgot, it was called like Kakiki Empire Granzilla? Or something, I don't know, it was. Yeah, it's like Kaiki or the Invasion, like they were full-on damn uh, like Carla Birch played through these. It was this, um, I'll actually make my screen a little bit wider. But these were like actual uh, mini games, I remember coming out from Japan Home first, and I remember this space in particular. And uh, it was kinda like, you would have to just go through a bunch of like missions, and uh, there were like little power-ups and stuff, and you would have to like fight these damn robots and stuff cuz they were like blowing up the city. I don't know if y'all guys remember this, but uh, I, I do. I wish we uh, had it actually. But, on the side note. You really? Yeah, man, uh, I will actually, um, there were, th- this was like a full-on game for Granzilla. Definitely uh, check it out, I will actually leave the link, uh, you could watch it probably later, if you want to, um, because this is something definitely I know you would like. Cuz it came out in Japan Home first, and then it came out to uh, the US and EU version, and I remember uh, playing both. They used to have some uh, cool face mask items that you could win, um, from whatchamacallit. Alright, so we got, we getting some good uh, stuff from Granzilla. I would love to get like old IRIM and Granzilla data too, I think that would be awesome. Alright, we getting some nice Japanese Granzilla stuff right now, so hold on. I just wanna have enough data, so god forbid, uh, I could keep this in an archive, and uh, and I will actually send this in like the chat. Just trying to see what else, uh, some of this stuff is like Marvel stuff and uh, other stuff is. What is this? Is this somebody's PSN ID? Taranap, Darana, P3. Hmm, interesting. I may do, let me see some. Ah, MP3, hmm. I think that's actually a PSN user, I can actually verify, uh, let me go to PSN profiles. I'm going to uh, reverse search somebody. And I could tell, um, if this, this looks like a real Japanese user, I may contact that person. Yeah, could not find, PSN ID cannot be found, did I said it? Taranap, oh, I spelled it wrong, okay, hold on. This will, like, I'm trying to look at her PSN profiles, and uh, I will, let's see, alright, so, damn, uh, trophies cannot track. Let me see. I'll maybe do this later on, but uh, I just find it weird that it will have like a user's ID, I don't know if that was like a developer or something, and I could probably look into that later, but that's kinda interesting. I don't know what space this even is though, like, I don't even recall the space that looks like this. Where, what is this picture? Damn it, I forgot where is it located? Oh, it's here, alright, this looks like Granzilla, so I'm just, even though I know it's not really, I'm just gonna place it here. Um, okay, hey, what's up? Oh, you do, Tiff? Hey, that's what's up, yeah, I used to play it. Uh, yeah, there's a handful of images with IDs, so what was the one screen link that's missing in Namco Arcade Center? Uh, I don't think anything is actually missing, but we could go check, uh, let me go back to, um. Let's go ahead and back out, we're gonna go back into uh, we could go take a really quick look, the other arcade center is running off some weird, or not, Namco Theater or whatever it's called, uh, is running off of like some really weird uh, script, but right now, I'm just trying to uh, launch Home, so I'm transferring the, this track is amazing, what song is this and what were we listening to? Let me shut up for a second, let me see what song it is. I think it's saying Going to Southampton, um, all of these songs, um, if you're really interested, um, I just put it, slapped it in a playlist, um. Here, I'll do this really quickly for you, um. I will send you the playlist I made of all of the songs that were streamed today, uh, cuz what I did was compiled it into like one video, and uh, yeah, here, it's like something dummy I made. So if you really wanna download this uh, file, um, it has all the music that is playing in today's livestream, I actually, once I edit out the, um, so here's the link, my guy. Uh, yeah, you could take, uh, this is like the file I just sent in the chat, that's the music, but yeah, Kyle, can you go online in Playstation Home, uh? Well, about online is still in a work in progress, um, any, like, in terms of online, um, whatchamacallit, uh, I will, or in terms of online, I really can't show anything physically right now due to A, security reasons, B, uh, it's like confidential stuff. Like I don't wanna stream anything that will kinda get me flagged per se. If that makes any sense, but uh, for these clients, uh, the servers are not set up like their newer ones, but I can't say too much about other stuff cuz I don't wanna give stuff out away, trust me, when, when there's an online update, I will spam you guys in the server, and uh, you, you'll definitely know, trust me, you'll, you'll definitely know. So, and you're a musician, nice, uh, I make music on the side too. Let's see, Houston. I used to like, if you guys ever hear my intro to my videos, that's me rapping, I like to rap and stuff. Yeah. Once we get like, once the online is in a really good space or whatever, and like, it's out of quote-unquote the development stages, um, I will definitely probably stream, uh, but of course, there's no ETAs for that cuz there's still a lot of work that me and a ti- uh, team has to do, so. But, let me right now go to, so we got our Granzilla like archive. Um, we're gonna look at the Lua script for uh, the Namco Theater cuz my guy wanted to look at that. So I'm gonna go to uh, the Sunset space, since that's what I'm trying to focus on now, but I'm gonna like multitask. I don't even actually know where that space is called really quickly. So, hold on. Namco Theater. Alright, so that's Playmax 2. Alright, so, I got like one hand with my controller doing something, and I got my other hand looking for the other stuff. Uh, this is confusing. So I don't even know like. Alright, hold on. SDC. Main Lua, yeah, it's, it's calling from another folder, which is this one. Yeah, the dude who made the Lua, um. Here, uh, I'll do this, I'll send it later a little bit. But let me go ahead and uh, select, ah, man, hold on, let me select the space, but I'll uh, I'll s- like, you should see my full screen now, um, but like, here's the Lua, uh, Kyle. Some dude named Kiesuke Nishimura from Bandai, Bandai Namco Games made this, I guess, and it was compiled in December eighteenth. Uh, I'm not even too sure how long the stream is, it's already an hour, but uh, okay. I'm a graphical engineer and I love piano for rapping, that's what's up, man. I truly miss Playstation Home, I would love to see it reintroduced fully and immersed gaming. Same, that really means a lot, yeah, I like, I love music too, um, sometimes I rap on the side, I like to freestyle. Um, I do wanna get into BP production. But here's like the Lua library, see, I'm seeing where it calls stuff from, like the Tetsu screen, bridge screen, um. It's just, I, it's just a script, basically. I'm just trying to see like what else is like getting, getting called, but I'm seeing where the call, like the source is saying, okay, this is what video has to play, and then there was like a little, a wait logo. Um, it's in plain text, but I don't know why it's still not loading, I've tried my best, and we could actually. And half of the text is in Japanese, so, which it doesn't help, well, I mean, it's, the half of the sources in English, but I don't know if it's saying any other key stuff that I can uh, edit the Lua script, so whatever. But everything is set to on, it seems, from the script itself. Yeah, it says wait play then, if then, if the self-function, yeah, the, the script looks fully like, nothing was re-edited from it. Can I send it? Uh, yeah, give me a moment. Uh, where are you at, Kyle? Here, I'll send you it now. Here you go, alright, but let's go back onto the Granzilla Sunset space cuz I wanna go ahead and send that, alright, so. What we need to do now, or what I'm trying to focus on is uh, get these posters up, so this should be one, or well, two, four, and then five, basically. So there's only five posters, including that one, and uh, we could get that done really quickly, so. Um, let me just X out of Discord really quick, but. What I'm gonna do actually is keep an archive of screen link stuff. So, this is where I'mma have everything stored for all my work, so I could reference that, but uh, let's check the local scene list, and I'm going to uh, LG Space Japan Map Scenes GZ Square, okay, I gotta go through that exact file location, user directory, um. I don't even really know what I like, straight up go for though, cuz like, alright, so, LG Space, Japan, map, scenes. Alright, so yeah, this is it, um, but we gotta find the screen link where it's calling from. So, hold on. Okay, this is where I get crazy, so I'll show you what I gotta like decipher, so here's like, yeah, y'all guys should see my screen now, I have to figure out where the hell the screen link file is through all of this code right here. And I need to make sure that everything is mapped correctly, I did a little bit of it, but there's so many Luas in here, oh god, um. Okay, let me see if there's any memory issues, uh. Alright, all of these are just uh, MP manager get network time for posters, and it's actually, okay, it actually is telling me from here, so I really don't, I could ignore that, I could definitely ignore this. Uh, this is a weird directory. You know what, before I get started on this, cuz I'm, I'm jumping the gun, I'm absolutely jumping the gun, let me get the user directory done for uh, Star Wars, so I won't forget that, because we did complete that, um. And we're going to just go ahead and get that fully done, so let me go ahead and create the patch for you guys now, so once I have this on GitHub, it'll be easier, um, not Playmax. Yeah, um, where was the folder I was working in? Uh, I, I forgot where, where we're working at, holy snap, uh, let me say Star. Our Lucas Arts. Layer Out, okay, that's what it was called, I should've known. So Layer Out. Alright, sorry, sometimes I do, I have a tendency of doing multiple things at once, so sometimes I kinda forget, like, I'm always working on like a multiple thing at once, uh, okay, so, screen content, um. Alright, the main screen links looks good, alright, so in the source file looks good, um. Alright, yeah, that's fine, so, alright, Star Wars is done, I packed it for you guys later. Um, now, let's go back into TM logs, and I'm going to start debugging this. Alright, so this is where it exactly wants one of the folders at, I guess, I think so. Alright. It's weird, why is it calling it from April twenty twelve, but uh, okay, uh, Himitsi Seek, or what the hell, Himitsi Kichi? Okay, so it's in that folder, Himitsi Kichi, Japan, map, source images. The hell? I don't know why it's a calling from that directory though, there's so much uh, I'm gonna, actually. Um I'm gonna reload the logs now and I wanna see where does it mess up Alright so we got our culprit actually LG space uh Let me see what I got saying in the chat if anybody oh snap um I'm on PlayStation three um I'm using a offline build uh I'm using a PlayStation three What's so loud in the background uh was something loud was I banging on the table Cuz I got my headphone on so I really can't hear But I gotta figure out so it wasn't I don't know why some stuff was getting called from that directory LGG Alright so LGG space um soft Japan alright so everything is like getting introduced in this space for whatever Ah hell no I really don't like any of this this is so much man EU green Japan green what the hell This is odd Alright we're gonna we're gonna make this easy bro we're gonna make this easy Uh I'm going to start from the root and we're gonna place everything in this one folder right here so I'm going to change the sources so it could read from this directory since I'll I don't like to have too many directories like I don't wanna keep on jumping directories like every forty-five seconds um cuz it will get messy um We're gonna go back and I'm gonna slap that over here this is where all of our content is located so let me just go ahead and Put GZ and then that's gonna be like our main directory basically for now And then what we're gonna do is just get the source of one of these files And I'm going to get a random ass picture I don't even care what it is uh we're gonna use this one why why not And the DDS folder should be here so boom now I'm gonna reload the space and uh I'll pop up the space back Since y'all guys are seeing a PC side of the thing But yeah thank you guys for leaving twenty-three likes thank you for the fifteen people uh thank you killer New York City uh for coming in here I don't even know what Unless just like a hidden image somewhere I don't know Cuz I don't know where where that poster would be at Cuz it didn't pop up so either A it has the wrong screen links So hmm Alright what I'm what I'm about to do Gonna reload it again uh cuz I don't know where it's even calling from I just gotta figure out which screen goes to which which this is like the hard part on certain spaces especially like Japanese ones I don't see any other posters uh being placed in the space so I really don't know where it's getting called from Like I would see if there was posters outside of here or something but I am not getting that a little I don't know if it's a Lua script issue maybe the space can't get posted but I mean the video works so I honestly don't know Alright what I'm about to do is unless it really needs each poster in that location uh then it's Maybe it wants it in that directory I'll take a random poster right and I'll just follow I don't know Maybe it needs to be in April twenty twelve uh I don't want it in twenty twelve I really want it somewhere else but if that's the only way it's gonna read it then uh That's gonna be trash Even calls like everything in the same like uh Alright so I'm gonna try to reload it again um But I'm not too sure though this this one may be gonna give me uh multiple issues Yeah what's up Daniel what's your question feel free to ask and thank you for uh watching the stream I'm just over here like what the hell um Give me a second Hold up fam I think I got it maybe cuz it's it's I'm looking at the logs they're saying Himitsu alright so it's it's a local file yeah it is a local file now just run it Oh thank you I mean hey if you guys are having fun I'm having fun um I just my brain is sometimes freezes and I do have like a stuttering problem so I do apologize if I uh Sometimes stutter and I do have like a less a low key or well high key but thank you guys just for you know cuz I I have anxiety low key all the time so this like doing streams helps me uh you know just with my stuttering issues and stuff so And so I I just always appreciate y'all guys just listening to me and you know just staying in for you know how long even if it's like for two minutes five minutes the whole damn time uh But I'm I'm trying to compare and contrast like why like what's the issue like it's in it's in the directory you want right like look it's right there What is you like what is you talking about I think my brain is gonna explode Screen zero zero yeah okay Bro It is right there I'm looking at it Uh unless this is the wrong uh folder Wait 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 I'm I swear to God if it's this issue I'm about to find out right now hold on dude Wait no no that's stupid Ah I don't even know at this point my brain is not working I gotta check this and this is gonna be like the ultimate screen one screen three Screen four Bro what the hell I've let me see something The screen is like all the way down there you know what fuck it oh a curse damn it now I'm probably gonna get demonetized uh but whatever Yeah cuz my brain is like not understanding this alright so I'm listening to you I'm back Um so my PlayStation three is on keks uh four point eighty-six and every time I go into a game it freezes so I have to use iris man to load a game and when I do it I can't sign in I can make a tutorial on how to download PC games uh I my PC is probably too trash to even record anything on PC to uh Record and ah look I fixed it I fixed that but uh In terms of that A what game were you using B is your game modded and uh C let me ask you this um Do you try to use multi-man and is your game like a ISO and PKG cuz I know sometimes if you use mob menu uh it kinda messes up But yeah we got one poster here bro I'm just happy um Alright so I'm just bro I'm like really teed because I don't have to edit this in a certain way And um it's gonna I got one thing fixed though so I'm kinda happy I'm finna die Alright so The thing is I gotta create this file path uh that's what's really more important that's what I should focus on now because I really don't um Finna die Alright so Let's do the file path and uh I'll actually just um I need to focus on that alright so This don't This space is gonna stress me the hell out but you know what I do it for the love of home and I do it for you guys Cuz I know when once it's done and it looks good I'm happy with it y'all guys happy with it so That's what keeps me motivated And uh you know this is the this is the role I have to play so I have to you know I signed up for this so I ain't gonna try to fail and like quit Alright we got that Map okay we got that Source images damn we got that You want that alright so we got that too alright we got everything we need for the patch so the patch folder is looking good Um What I need to do is now in this folder This shouldn't matter like the 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 source root file name should not matter if it does this is gonna be trash um But I'm gonna do like a three uh part toggle to this like I don't know That's literally like the same picture though Alright nah maybe we could do two So hold on Perfect I just heard like the she fighter Alright did I even transfer that no I didn't F in the chat I'm already I'm already being I'm slacking son Alright hold on Okay So let's see if we get this working do not quit PlayStation home bruh Oh it's not oof and thank you guys for the twenty-seven likes I appreciate it appreciate it Like I don't like sometimes I feel like I'd be boring y'all with this live stream and nah I won't quit just some days uh home be pissing me off uh I ain't gonna lie like home sometimes just doesn't wanna work Please just toggle please 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 just work Why is it not working Bruh this don't got a functionality where it toggles like both screens Well this is trash um Whatever Alright so we're just gonna say bunk that bro Main Lua script ah maybe that's why What's this one column says customer center uh I could get like a customer picture I guess or something that looks customer oriented I don't know what looks customer ish I don't know but I'm gonna just put this one here Yo I like how I I just heard the beat and like in my ear I like how they did the chungly laugh at the end that was that was a really great transition Should have a break my development team said I need to take a break they said I don't I'm a workaholic like I just keep on working Cuz I work on online and offline And I work on my YouTube stuff Bro what in the see this is what I'm talking about it says screen four right and I'm like okay that is screen four I give you screen four And I'm like, okay, that is screen 4, I give you screen 4 and, uh, you don't like that, so why? Screen 3? Why can't it just be, like, the Japanese spaces always gets on my nerves? Unless the file is not even there, that could be it, maybe I'm being stupid, actually. This can't be it, bruh, hold on. Maybe it's me. I think it's me. That's me, I think, I think this is a me thing. I don't think. I don't think I had a file transferred, alright, you know what? Here's what I'ma do, bruh. I'ma transfer everything over here and, uh, whatever happens, happens. Yeah, there I go. Oh, what the hell, so that screen is actually a screen? Uh, why is that working now? Hmm, what did I do differently? Now my brain is confused, confusion of the highest order. Confusion of the highest order, I'm so confused right now. I kinda like this one. Alright, so. 120. We're going to figure out which is which now, I gotta work backwards before I work forward. Alright, so that's not that. So what in the hell is turning that on right now? That's not even that one, so, what? Uh, yeah, that's not even a match, so I don't understand how that's popping up on that television over there. What? 16. Did I actually, let me see. This is not even in the script itself, so how's it reading? This is so annoying. Brody. See, this is what like I have to do it. And sometimes my temper gets short. Cuz like, I don't even understand how it's even on the screen, like, it, it's not even referenced, like, it wasn't even there a second ago and then it wants to be there. Alrighty, so. I mean, to be honest, if it stays there, I think I'mma just keep it there, but I wanted something else. Yeah, even a movie works now, I mean, still. Alright, so they toggling now, alright. Freaking, uh. This is just messing with my brain cells so much. I don't know if there's a functionality where like if it's not on the screen, it would just put a blank one? But I'm not seeing that. 305, uh. Yeah, I think after this space, um, if I get to a good place to it, I'mma be taking a break and, uh, getting me some snack on because my brain cells are like dwindling. Alright, hopefully this, alright, so this third screen right here I just walked up to, uh, should be fixed. We've been going on for an hour and 36 minutes, it's just crazy how like an hour could fly by though. But yeah, if you guys, uh, you have many sons and, uh, and like nobody comes watches these PlayStation Home development sessions, well, uh, when it comes to that, a lot of my fan user bases or base doesn't even know PlayStation Home. Uh, number two, uh, re- region differences. And plus, I don't even tell people like livestream, like, I just do it randomly. Like, I literally will do it randomly and, uh, people will just come up, but, like, it depends, like, if I, like, my last live streams did really good, uh, the ones for PlayStation, uh, whatchamacallit, that didn't pop up with the F. Sorry, I'm just looking at the screen, or why is it not? But I'm not doing it for the numbers, like, I'm doing this, uh, for A, myself, B, just to keep like an archival track of like the progress going on, at least in the offline build, and just to re-interact with the community, like, even though I have like 10,000 people, uh, people do live in different regions and like some people working stuff, so. I take all of that into consideration and, like. But like my other views does better, but I, I mean, I understand what you're saying in that regards. Like, I enjoy doing this, it were like, like regardless if there was like literally one person watching me, or if there was like 10 million, uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter to me. But yeah, that's why I always thank everybody who like, you know, spends their time just to watch me, um, I'll share guys' schedule and day, it means a lot. Cuz like, y'all guys don't have to, like, you could be doing something totally different, uh, but I guess I'm somewhat entertaining, somewhat. Yo, why is this? Bruh. This, this space, this space right here, man, this space. 020. Buddy. I'm literally about to cry, cuz. I don't even know where I'm doing in the code to not make it run. Yeah, Internet Archive is a plug, and Danielle Clay's, I want PlayStation Home, yeah, I do too, I want home to be back online. There I go. So I fixed it. Why is it not toggling? Bro. Ah, hold on. What in the hell? This is like literally trash. This is like a pain, like, I can't even explain how bad this is making me wanting to flip. Cuz I, see, the thing is, it's like I have to decipher this and, uh, attempt to understand like what the hell is it saying. Brody. Alrighty, but yeah, I think this one will be fine, uh. Alrighty, so, it's loading up one more time. This is the thing of like, working on RPCS 3 will be so much faster, but, uh, debugging on PS3 is a special kind of, um, patience you need to acquire, because like any little bug can always occur, PS3 could just shut down, uh, it's just. It's just, this is what the process of debugging is, trying to think out the box and, uh, use clean new, or keynotes and clues to fix your problem. Alright, so I don't wanna have any memory issues, holy hell, and it's already tweaking. Alright, we got that last one and, uh, that one is gonna stay right here though, um. 306, 307. Think I'm getting the gist of how to set this up now though, I'm straight, I'm straight, my guy. Alright, so, these two, we're gonna just swap really quickly. Alright, this should be it and then, uh, I'll be done with this space. And I think I'm gonna be calling it, uh, quits and then I will actually create the patch and, uh, send it to you guys later on tonight, after I QA it, just to make sure it's not tweaking, I mean, it shouldn't be too much since I ain't working on items and stuff. Alright, so. Video's running, uh, this is running. Alright, so it looks good, um. What I can do is actually, uh, I'll show you how I do my patch of videos and pictures. Um, but everything looks straight for the most part, um. Now I'm gonna go ahead and create some cool little images to add for the showcase, I like to call it, so. What I'm gonna do, you see my guy, my avatar here, he's gonna get knocked off the sky, like, I don't want him anywhere in the scene, so I'm gonna teleport him to Nowhere Land, so let me just teleport this dude so he can't even be here. Alright, so, my guy is somewhere out in the sky somewhere, um, he won't be dropping back for a long time. So let's go ahead and take some nice pictures of the space where it's, uh, that looks pretty nice, I think. Um, but let me go ahead and take some really nice photos and, uh, yeah. So we got that, let me go into, I made a folder with all the patches and stuff in it, this is it. Uh, Patch Notes Pictures, we're gonna call this, um. Granzilla Square. Japan 1, that's just picture 1, um. Trying to get like a really good angle or something. Alright, I'm trying to, well, we could here, we could take a picture from like this angle, maybe. Cuz I fixed that video a long time ago. The damn dinosaur leg is like blocking me. Yeah. That'll do. Alright, so this is gonna be picture 2. And I'm just creating these pictures so y'all guys, uh, could see, and this is just, this is how I document myself too when I work on stuff, so I won't forget, so I'm like, oh, what did I do? Uh, I already know what I did cuz I took pictures, um. And I'll take one more picture. And then we're gonna go back into the original space we started on today. Alright, and then we're gonna go to Star Wars really quickly. And I will read the chat in a second, I know I'm like neglecting the chat a little bit, uh, but I will actually read it now. What's this for? Um, this is basically PlayStation Home and I've, um, I'm restoring its screen links and just any content, whether it be item spaces and, uh, whatchamacallit, and thank you, uh, Arthurs, thank you, I appreciate it. But, um, let's go ahead and take some nice pictures for the client and, uh, right, or, right when I do that, let me, um. I'll even add this in the patch, GG Source, uh, Picture, Archive, Backup. Let's go ahead and, uh. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and I'm gonna go ahead and take another screenshot, um. We're gonna take another one right here. I'm gonna take another one right here. Ooh, don't tell me it timed out. Ah, it messed up my pictures, damn it. Alright, no worries though, um, I always keep a backup. Um, we just, Online Status Code? Oh, I froze, oof. Um, okay, well, sheesh. Well... So I guess my whole console froze, but uh, let's go ahead and, let me see if I, oh man. I don't think I can even uh, connect the target. Uh, I'll, um... I'll restart the target. So I'm gonna restart my PlayStation 3, uh, hopefully that will take me out of Sky. I think the Sky is not fixed for wipeout, but let me, hold on. I think I forgot fix- uh, fixing it up. I don't know if the Sky was like that, oh, the Sky looked totally different, what the hell? Uh, maybe the Sky was running Lua or something. Yeah, the Sky looks way, way different. Um, okay, well, that gives me a... Alright, so my console is like disconnected right now. Let me, um, go ahead and save, uh, Star Wars Screen Link Pick 1. I may work on... That little bit later, because uh, I don't have my material for the Sky yet, but I'm getting this booted back up to the screen. But in the meantime, that, we could, that doesn't mean we can't still work on some other stuff, uh... We will get this, uh... Okay. I'm getting so confused now. Uh... Sugar Honey Ice Tea. Alright, so... I will have to look at wipeout probably another time, um... But I'm trying to just get these images done, and then I can uh... But thank you for reminding me though, because I honestly... Uh, so I see, so this gotta read from two directories. Alright, let me just take a step back really quickly. And I'm going to have to create these two folder subsets right here. Okay, so this is the software part. Alright, so, that's done. Now what I gotta do is go ahead and get the official name, so I can add this to the patch notes, and I will uh... Add this later on. So where's the patch notes? Already did it, so... And yeah. I see what you were saying though about the Sky. And sadly, the way how home loads, it takes so long, because it's like trying to read multiple files, and luckily when I said that, uh, it actually launched. Let's go ahead and go back to Star Wars one more time, and then uh... Lord, this is so much spaces. Hey, but you know what, I can't even complain, because I'd rather have so many spaces to scroll through, rather than have like, two spaces and it's like, the basic ones. Uh, it's just kinda crazy, I was just seeing how much work I put in and like, the team has put in. Cuz like, y'all guys did help with this as well. Just stretching out. Wow, we're almost hitting about two hours now, guys. Snap. And twenty-nine likes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the eleven people who are staying in right now, um... But yeah, let's, let's go ahead and rock on with this. All these are actually chairs we could sit down on. Nice. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and uh... Alright, let's go ahead and um... Ah, damn it, why is it doing that? Alright, I gotta disconnect from, here's a little trick I'm doing. Sense does not allow me to take screenshots on this console, I'mma set up my other console and get the screen image. Alright. Alright, so, Star Wars Screen Link Pick 2. Let me hurry up and whip through this. Don't tell me it froze, cuz it's like freezing, why not? Alright, so we got Pick 3. Alright, and then uh... We got this. Alright, so that's done. Um... But yeah, I think we're at a good space now. And, yeah, I think I'm about to end livestream. Um, this patch will more than likely be out very soon, like, literally probably in a hour or so, or later on today, depending on how I feel. Uh, but it'll, it'll definitely be out, the work that was portrayed today, uh, will get fixed. Um... Other than that... I'm not too sure. Let me see, oh, I was lagging for a second, but yeah, if you guys are still here, um, I'm about to add, end livestream now, thank you Kyle, thank you Thomas Hancock, thank you Arthur Stollers, um, for joining in, uh, thank you, anybody who's, you know, been supporting me in my other livestreams and stuff. Uh, thank you for all your help, I really appreciate it. Um, but yeah, I will definitely add this, oh yeah, my, my console's lagging and it's probably my internet. Uh, but yeah. But yeah, y'all guys have a great day, y'all guys have a... You know, just stay safe out there, but yeah, I'll see you guys next time in the livestream, or in the next livestream I do, peace.